We're at five. So are we, are we going?
I'm ready.
Okay, we have a quorum. We'd like to welcome everyone to our December sixth, two thousand twenty-three Corporate Heights City Planning Commission meeting. This is our work session. So just in reviewing our business session agenda, we have a couple of items that we're going to work on. A correction in a small little subdivision, just for the sake of the public and our planning commissioners that haven't experienced this before. Kind of periodically, things will crop up that are things that we just have kind of inherited as a city. And it's not that anybody has intentionally made any mistakes, but we kind of end up occasionally becoming the place to solve a problem that existed that nobody intended to exist and we're trying to not necessarily adjudicate it, but solve it. So and we'll obviously make a make a recommendation based on that. That's project S U B dash two, three, dash zero, zero, five. And we'll wait to hear the full details from the staff on that. And then the more exciting one, I'm sure for the public tonight, project Z T A dash two, three, dash zero, four, a public hearing of possible action on a zoning text amendment to establish standards and committee requirements for outdoor support courts and residential areas. You notice that this is not specifically labeling any particular activity. We're just adjusting our the standards that we have previously set for support courts in lieu of lots of discussion on myriad of corners from the from the city on both sides of this difficult issue. So and beyond that, I'm we'll get the details of what we're going to discuss there. And then I'm excited for us to get some details on the form-based code. You presented to the city council, I heard last night and and just I don't want to take more than just a couple of minutes, but just as an update, our town center, I don't know that this is into the microphone outside of the C D R A, but as just by means of update, that group of twelve that have been appointed by each of the city council members and the city manager has been a dynamic group, some fantastic contractors are involved and the interaction with staff and the the committee has been productive. We're trying to kind of get used to each other a little bit and kind of roles and staff has done a fantastic job of kind of herding cats with all of us that are involved. And there's a lot of generalized unity and what that hillside plaza that we're now calling the town center, at least for the moment, what that project would be. So just know that there will be much, much more to come and they are very anxious to hear what form-based code, especially relative to that piece of property will be. So as things are presented, I might interject a thing or two, but I don't. I think this will be a great opportunity to exercise this form-based code in just the purest form right out of the chute. So that's all I have. So let's hear from the staff on the and the details you want to cover for the business agenda to preface a little and form-based code.
Can I really quick interject chair and just note two things? One, Commissioner Evler has joined us on Zoom. So.
Welcome, Commissioner Evler.
Glad to have you here.
Thanks. Thanks for having me.
And then the other thing I wanted to note is just for any members of the public, if you haven't already, if you'd sign in on the sign-in sheet at the side of the room, that just helps us with the the minutes. So just a little reminder there and without further ado, back to you or.
No, let's let's go ahead with the presentations here.
Right. Ian is going to present the update on the subdivision and then we'll, yeah, we'll jump to sport courts from there.
Great. Where's my phone?
Oh, for this one, you'll share it to the zoom. You want me to do it? And can you state my computer?
Sure.
If you're already on.
Yep. Oh, great. Why don't you go ahead, Mike? You're already on Zoom.
Thank you, Chris.
I know it's different in every room. This one's a plug. This one's a very little screen. Hope you to pass it to Ian.
Okay, that consists of difficulties. I have the P D. Okay, so you kind of touched on it earlier. The mic is on. But this is a pretty minor subdivision amendments. I'll go through it pretty quickly. And if you have questions up and down, let me know, of course, we can try to answer them. So this subdivision amendment, this is just a picture of the street view of the property from the county assessor. Yes, the subdivision application we processed this year, it's pretty simple. This is the location. You can't see the coloring very well on that screen, but on the TV behind us, the the blue shaded region are the subject properties. And I'll just quickly show you. This is kind of the the lot lines outlined a little more clearly. So there's two properties. One is quite smaller. It's to the north. Basically driveway and then the main property is the the one to the south. The owner of the properties are both within the Brady family. I think representatives of the family are here today. The zoning of this property or these two properties and of the properties nearby is our rural residential. You can kind of see on the map, it's on the north end of the city. It's at the end of a cul-de-sac right off of twenty thirty east, right by I two fifteen, which kind of impacted the subdivision when that was constructed. But the acreage of the parcels, the larger one is over one acre. It's one point two four. And then the smaller one is just shy of a fourth of an acre, just shy of a quarter acre. Again, that's the context. If you need me to go back there, just let me know. So this is kind of the confusing part. There's two boundary discrepancies that are being solved for with the subdivision amendment. One is an overlap and one is a gap. So along the western lot line of these two properties, there is an overlap with the parcel to the west. It's a little bit less than three feet of an overlap. So it's extremely minor in nature on our mapping software. It doesn't even show up. And then the second discrepancy also doesn't show up on our mapping software, but you can see here that there's just shy of three feet of a gap along the southern edge. On this map, this large lot, you can see here kind of at the end of a cul-de-sac is labeled as lot fifteen and lot fourteen. On the original subdivision plot for Ellison Woods, these were two different lots at some point, probably decades ago, these were combined into one lot. So just note that. Yeah, if you need me to clarify this a bit, I can, but I'll just continue on with the the presentation. So essentially the amendment is solving for these two discrepancies for the overlap and for the gap.
And you mentioned Ian really quick. I think they just came up as as you're writing your staff report, the property owners are looking at some future development opportunities and just in their preparation for that, their surveyor had just found them with the title boundary gaps. So it was something where they were, you know, doing their homework, doing their due diligence on it, and these things came up. Otherwise, we probably wouldn't have known it was there. But I'll just point out for any members of the public who maybe are farther away from the screen, the overlap is shown on the left of the screen with the the red and the green, and then the gap is shown with the red and the blue on the right of the screen.
And this is this is a really technical application. It's really minor. It's not really affecting like the land use or or anything substantial with these properties. But it is on the outer boundary of subdivision, which is why we had bring this to you. Otherwise, we would just process it as a lot lineup or a lot line adjustment application. We didn't receive any public comments.
You'll comment in the business meeting?
Yeah.
In the next meeting.
We didn't receive any public comments by the cutoff date, and I didn't. I didn't see any emails.
No public comments for this item.
Yeah. And then we just had a few findings. Again, it's it's a very minor lot line adjustment intended to remedy a survey discrepancy because it affects the outer boundary of a subdivision. A subdivision amendment application is required according to our code. And then all the affected properties are owned by the Brady family, which is who's represented by the applicant David Johnson. So neighbor consent was not required for this item. Again, we find it's code compliant as we outlined in the staff report, and we recommend approval for projects. Do you guys have any questions for me or for us?
Yes. How did you decide who gets which three feet?
I'm not sure you have to ask that. It was proposed. That's that's what they came in. They proposed it.
Okay, I just.
Yeah, that's a great question.
Well, no, I'm just wondering if there's a mechanism to decide when there's an overlap, who gets that? And when there's the gap, who gets the gap?
It was just agreed upon.
Not not in our city code. There's not a mechanism outlined in code. So.
Then the property neighboring property owners are happy with whatever the religion is.
The neighboring property owner's property is unaffected by it, which is why consent from those property owners wasn't needed because no changes were being made to their property.
So this is just a really a surveying error.
Yeah, they can explain it in the business, but generally what happened is the the one subdivision is from like nineteen forty-eight or forty-seven. It's really old. The the monument that they use to as a basis to take surveys was different for a couple of these different subdivisions, which resulted in these little these little gaps in title with either just no man's land. It's not even a parcel in between. It's just.
No, I get it. I've been next door to one for years, but I'm just curious.
Yeah.
How how one decides who gets what three feet?
And I think their intention here is the property to the south is if they didn't want to affect that parcel at all, so they expanded that way. And then likewise, the property of the west, they didn't want to affect it all. So they pulled their two feet off of that overlap. So they they basically made sure the impact was on the lots that they own.
Okay.
To reconcile the issues.
Yeah.
That's a good question.
It's a a unique one.
These don't come up very often, and when they do, it's a little bit complicated.
Other questions, comments? So there's no dispute here with the property. It's all owned by the same family.
Yeah.
So it's all stayed within the same.
Yeah, different members of the family, but same family. The properties, any any of the properties that are having a change to them are owned by the same family and represented by a single surveyor. And so that made it a little bit more straightforward in that sense. The city hasn't received any any public comment about it. No disputes have been voiced to the city about it. Of course, it's on for a public hearing in the business session, so it'll be open for public comment at that time.
So pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one's pretty straightforward, too.
We like those.
It's not.
It's not at all.
Okay. We'll spend some time now talking for court ordinances.
Don't do.
There's a brief refresh for those.
There's a brief refresh for those um. Uh the the haven't been kind of in in with the conversation, but back in September. City council issued the moratorium on sport courts. That lasts up to six months, that puts us into March twenty twenty four before that moratorium was. The direction from the council was, you know, come up with something to address these concerns. You know, run it through the process, you know, it puts it hopefully by March, we'll have some sort of reasonable solution in place. We brought that to you a a number of months back and I think at a couple subsequent work sessions as well. It's an issue that doesn't have a a super straightforward solution and there are a number of different ways to. In terms of regulation to resolve the concerns that we've heard. As a reminder, the concerns really were prompted by a a handful of pickleball courts being constructed in residential areas. And the concerns over lighting and noise primarily and and kind of secondarily fencing um caused by those uses. Um we've addressed before, our the city's lighting and fencing ordinances are are pretty well established, so this compliance with those. For the most part resolves those issues, so then noise became kind of the main factor that we were tasked with trying to establish regulations for. Um after the last work session, I I know the the commission was, you know, kind of. In in several different places on how to approach this and 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 thoughts and additional feedback from the city council may be. Helpful, so we did take that back to the city council um and got their their feedback at a previous meeting. Feedback was generally, I think there was consensus on the council that it is a tricky, a tricky issue, there's not a a super easy solution, but. The takeaway is, and I don't want to speak for the council members, but these are from my notes, um some regulations are needed, but it shouldn't outright. Be prohibited, nor should pickleball be regulated or singled out, regulated differently than other sport court uses. That there was kind of consensus on that. Um a a permit and an affidavit were were two things that the council did, like the idea. Permit being a a requirement to get a building permit when you build a sport court and the associated fencing and lighting. Uh the affidavit is basically just signed acknowledgement by the permit applicant that they are aware of. All of the regulations and the noise ordinances and and agree to, you know, be in compliance with those things. It doesn't add any additional regulation and it's not like the city can't enforce those things without the affidavit sign. But it does set an expectation upfront, hey, be aware of this um this concern if you're going to build this. And then, you know, part of this issue is enforcement related, enforcement of the noise ordinances and and how we deal with that. Given that direction, a a few ideas were discussed at the council meeting and and this is the updated draft that you received, you'll notice the draft is. It's pretty short, but this is kind of the the bullet point summary of where the draft is currently. And as we go through this, I'll differentiate how this is different from the last draft we presented. Uh this current draft regulates all outdoor sport courts over five hundred square feet. Uh there were discussions previously of just regulating pickleball and and not the others and and that was more of a use regulation than a, you know, than a structure regulation. Um so so now we're proposing that all outdoor sports courts be regulated. Uh building permit uh required for court lighting and fencing, utilizing existing fencing and lighting standards and their new regulations there. A signed affidavit required, again, we talked about that and then we get to setbacks. Um and and this is kind of where this, I don't want to say there was consensus, but but at least a direction to move forward with coming out of city council is. Um just as a refresher, we did some some research into studies that have been done of the the noise generated by. Pickleball and kind of the unique impact that pickleball has over other sport court uses. I mean, how do we combine that with regulating all sport courts and and do this in some equitable way? The 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 studies show that you need to be about a hundred fifty to two hundred feet, some studies show much more than that, but we saw. Several that were a hundred fifty to two hundred feet away from a, you know, wherever, a property line in this case, but wherever you're listening from. In order for that pickleball noise to to reach those acceptable levels of the sixty to sixty-five decibel level, so that's where that hundred fifty foot comes from, it's. It's kind of the lower end of the studies that we were able to find, Commissioner Paulson, do you have a question?
It's a it's a long one, I don't know, but I want to interrupt your presentation just.
Okay, I'm I'm almost done and we can. Previously, um if you'll remember, our draft said without sound mitigation or without a sound study, it's a hundred fifty feet to all property lines. Acknowledging that's very prohibitive, there there aren't a lot of properties in the city, I don't want to say there are none, but I don't know, but there aren't a lot that could comply with that. Um and then before we we proposed, you could cut that setback in half, down to seventy-five feet. With a qualified noise study showing how you're going to mitigate. We did some additional uh research, we presented this to the commission last time, there are things you can do, you can use different equipment. You can use vegetation, you can use um, you know, acoustic paneling on on fencing. And different combinations of those are shown to reduce the noise impacts uh in different ways. Without being overly prescriptive as to how you reduce noise, where the ordinance is right now is that. With a sound study and recommended mitigation implemented, you can reduce the setback. And basically, the more you mitigate the noise, the more you can reduce the setback, you can get to a point where you can show at the property line. With the mitigation in place, it's not going to exceed sixty-five decibels. You can be right up next to the property line if if there is mitigation out there that exists for that. So that's where it is today is without any additional um steps in the process, it's still that hundred fifty feet. With a a sound study or a noise analysis showing mitigation, you can reduce as far as the mitigation will take you. Um I've got a bunch of other background information here, but maybe I'll stop there, we can get into questions, that might be more beneficial. Let's go back to you, yeah?
My comment is that I'm. When we first talked about this, I thought, well. What's really the issue and it seems like the issue is sound. And so pickleball generated that. Uh and so I thought, well, let's look at it as sound, so I looked at the decibel production of various activities uh against the hertz, and the difference. Is that hertz becomes annoying to the human ear right around five thousand, well, about two thousand to five thousand megahertz.
Mm-hmm.
And the range of megahertz is goes from. One to about twenty, but we don't hear all that. And oddly enough, pickleball approaches the two thousand megahertz, as does table tennis. But the rest of the sports, tennis, for example, is fifteen to four hundred and five megahertz, baseball's about five hundred. Basketball's somewhere between one to ten. And what what that means, as near as I can tell, not being a sound engineer. Is that the noise that's produced by some sports is way less irritating to the human ear than others. The other thing that you you it's measured in is decibels, which is what the ordinance is written in, well. The decibels for table tennis is about fifteen hundred to seventeen hundred, well, no, that was the megahertz, my my bad. Um. We just went to a concert. But I looked into some and like. As far as decibels go, golf is sixty to seventy when you strike the ball, table tennis is seventy to eighty. Tennis is, in this study, was seventy to ninety, pickleball was the same as tennis. It's the only study I saw that those two were were close, every other study, tennis was much less.
Yeah.
The reasoning is because it's a stringed racket and the ball softer. Um. What else gets down? Well, volleyball was a hundred to a hundred and ten. Uh I think that's more than crowd noise, noise, having been to a whole lot of volleyball lately, but I digress. Um. Looked at uh basketball. Uh from another study, if you bounce the basketball, it was se- sixty-seven to seventy decibels at ten feet. Not anywhere close to a hundred feet or a hundred and fifty feet, shooting was sixty-seven to sixty-two, that's just the ball hitting the rim. And then if you're playing half-court ball, it's was somewhat sixty-one to seventy and that included the players. And that was twenty feet from the court, so tennis was uh forty to fifty decibels. Uh. Because of the strings we I talked about, um what's his point? My point is that pickleball creates irritating noise and a loud noise where these other sports don't. And when you, when we lump in uh sports courts in general, then we're also affecting. Possibly some tennis, tetherball, um basketball and those kinds of things, where is. Whereas the the thing that brought the question was pickleball, I'm wondering how many complaints we've had heretofore. For basketball courts, if the neighbors complained about those. Uh have they have they complained about any other sport than pickleball?
Um anecdotally, just from my experience, the answer is, no, we haven't seen. Any complaints that I can recall about other sport courts. But also, we haven't seen a ton of complaints about pickleball, I we're talking a handful.
We don't have a ton of courts.
Right, uh it it's a newer issue for sure, but but yeah, there there aren't a ton of complaints in general.
Yeah, I bet there are more pickleball courts than tennis courts.
Yeah, but I.
Yeah, yeah.
Did another kind of dumb study and I I looked at if you stuck a pickleball. Or in the middle of a property, how far away would you have to have it so that you got it, like I put it a hundred and fifty? And then, you know, putting acoustical walls, anyway, uh bottom line was, you would need. What did I come up with? Uh at a minimum, if if you had nothing else on the property, about six point five acre lot. If you put a house in that on it, then you're probably looking closer to a to a a whole acre lot to have. To be able to meet our regulations with pickleball, so right there, we have greatly reduced the places that you could stick a buck, pick a ball court. And go with the ordinance, I guess my. Kind of all over the place on this, but I guess the thing where I'm really going is. Why are we going sport courts?
Hmm.
And I think and and that was Mike Peterson's question as well in his comment. Was we're trying to get people outside and to do activities and now we're making it so. That because we got some complaints on pickleball, which makes more noise than a lot of the other sports that could be on a sport court. We're we're now hindering people to have a very small sport court, if you take the. If you look at that, it can only be like twenty-two feet side by side and then that's your five hundred square feet, it's not very big. And but that would fit on a whole lot of lots.
Yeah.
But you're not gonna be playing pickleball on it for sure, because it's not big enough, but. You know, I or we do, we want to impact all the those other sports that make less noise and and are less irritating.
I think that is the very question that we've been faced with and you hit that right on, is we've looked at it and it kind of presented it both ways, right? Like we had we had a draft where it was just pickleball and there are, there are the benefits to that maybe of of. Leaving some of the other maybe potentially less impactful uses untouched. But then there's also some potential cons there that were voiced about, are we using, blowing out a single activity um? And and creating more of a use regulation, regulation, and so. I think that is the question and and that's why the draft has kind of changed a few different directions.
Oh, I get it, but I the direction we're apparently going now is we're just gonna do sports courts.
Yeah.
So we're gonna hit anything that you can play in a sport court and I'm just wondering.
Came from the city council.
It it did, yeah, and and my answer to that would be. I don't disagree with anything you're saying, I think you're you're spot on and and we've kind of shared the the data on that before. It it is, the pitch of the pickleball is is just as as. Much of a concern, I think, as the the noise, the volume of the noise it generates.
Well, the other studies that I read, it was the rapidity of it, it's very quick, whereas the other sports, it's lazier.
That being said, someone is building, say, a tennis court or a basketball court. And it's not a hundred fifty feet, we now do have that option that says, you know, you can submit a study that shows how you're gonna keep the sound down. I I don't know that, you know, I I I think we could accept a a. A study that says it won't be used for certain purposes, it's a basketball court or it's a tennis court. That coupled with whatever mitigation they're proposing to say, you know, we only need ten feet from property lines to hit the the decibel levels for how we want to use this court. Them signing the affidavit, we, you know, we we don't know for sure, people might build a basketball court and use it for pickleball and, you know, whatever else later on, but then. We at least have the initial report done, we we've vetted it a little bit as much as we can at the permit level. And then they have acknowledged, they understand the noise ordinances and and they sign that. And we do our best moving forward and then if they, if there are issues, it becomes an enforcement issue.
So are we saying that in this, in the setback requirements, that if. How's it worded, to recommend with sound study and recommend, if they're saying we're gonna play basketball, if we ask whether it's the intended use. Of the this court and pickleball's not on there, we know that what the sound is gonna be and they don't necessarily have to put up. The acoustic wall things or anything like that, correct?
Yeah, all it says is you have to provide a a study with some recommended mitigation. And and I think an accepted mitigation is this won't be used for pickleball.
This is right.
And then we'd say if it is gonna be used for pickleball, you know, update that analysis at some point.
A qualified study of what? What is it that you're going to ask in that study, you're gonna ask them to play on their court to?
This is prior.
What the evidence is its compliance or not?
Sure, yeah, the definition of it outlines, I think, some of what you're asking, so maybe we can pull that up and look at that together.
And just remember that the the reason for the for the study is really to protect the resident that's building the court. Because what what we're trying to avoid here is that, you know, somebody sells you on, you're gonna put fifteen thousand dollars into. A sport court regardless of what the use is gonna be and. How how frustrating would it be to find out, listen, I was building a pickleball court. And they said, oh, yeah, you can do that in common heights, it's no problem, you build it and then find out that because of sound ordinances, you can't. You you know, it's it's actually gonna violate the sound ordinance, so I think the intention is not so to say. This is a hard fast line, at the end of the day, after it's built and you're playing, if you're violating the sound ordinance, you're violating the sound ordinance. But I do think, however we phrase it, we're trying to give residents guidance as they as they build this, that they're not gonna, you know. A contractor is gonna have to do some due diligence and, I mean, I do think we need to give guidance to a contractor and that's why I anticipate this would be happening. By as descriptive as we need to for a contractor to have it.
So in this case, it says we'll use a model. We won't, obviously, if the court's not built, you can't do a sound study on something that doesn't exist and that would be really problematic. So you're gonna use a model. And the model is based on your proposed use, is that?
It it would have to be, the court itself isn't making noise, that's how you use it, right? So so, yeah, to an extent, they would, there would have to be an intended use. Of that sport court to be able to model the the sound that it's going to produce.
And I'll tell you the.
And the particular equipment you're gonna use on the court and everything else.
And any other mitigation efforts you're proposing, so I think it was written in that way, um and I will note Commissioner Evler has this held up too, so I'll keep my kind of staff. Introductions brief here, but I think it was also suggested to to have this option for more flexibility, so it was like, if you can mitigate it, yeah, you can go closer. You know, make it work instead of just saying it's a hundred fifty feet.
It's just really hard to know how you would use that mitigation, because you you say, all right, I'll plant trees. Now you have to have an engineering model that takes into account all kinds of things for which there might not be a standard model.
Yeah.
Yeah, it it's, I think. Uh the best way we found so far to build flexibility into it, I guess, and say, if you really want to do this in your yard. Do this study and find a way to make it work, the language for the study came specifically from Park City's ordinance, so this is what they require up there. Um for those studies and and that was their rationale too, was if people want to do it, we have this avenue to do it, but they need to kind of burden of proof is on them to show that it can work. So that, yeah, they don't end up with a situation where they've paid tens of thousands of dollars for an amenity that then they can't use.
From a staff standpoint, do you feel like the way this is written? Gives you enough breadth, as much breadth as possible, frankly, for a resident who's made a a good faith effort in. With their contractor to to demonstrate that, okay. This can be mitigated and or or number two, that it can't be mitigated. Yeah, my my hope is that to Commissioner Shelton's point, that the the threshold is as low as possible. And mostly that it's communicated, then listen, when this gets all built. If you're, if if somebody can put a a meter on the top of your fence and you're playing pickleball for, you know, some period of time. The study is not gonna be the thing that governs what's happening next, it's gonna be a code enforcement issue, correct?
Yeah, this is, this is not dissimilar to how we, you know, if you want to build in a sensitive lands area, in the vicinity of a fault line or a steep slope. There's a number of ways to engineer a building to to fit in that area and we just say, do a study from a a qualified professional, show it to us. You know, generally, you know, there's parameters, but whatever mitigation that they propose for that. The the city will accept because it's been vetted by an expert, same concept here, we're not trying to prescribe exactly what mitigation, because there's. To your point, different types of trees have different impacts on sound, different, you know, different fence heights and methods of sound insulation. Are gonna produce different results and then different uses of the court are gonna be completely different, so we're just saying. There's a lot of variability here, just whatever you're intending to use yours for, analyze it, show us, you know, have an expert sign off on that. And then just be aware, there is this enforcement piece, you do have to continue to comply with these, the sound study doesn't get you. And then just be aware, there is this enforcement piece. You do have to continue to comply with these. The sound study doesn't get you out of complying with this forever moving forward. Yeah.
You mentioned that first of all.
Yep, maybe we, yeah, Commissioner Ebbler, let's get back to him as well. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, the question I have, the variable that I, maybe I've missed it, but. I think eighty decibels. At noon is a lot different than eighty decibels at eleven o'clock at night.
For sure.
And I think the time of day is something that maybe needs to be incorporated into this. If my neighbors are playing pickleball. Of. You know, day long during the daylight hours, I have no problem at all with that. I would like to see that. It would be very good for them to do that. If they're doing that at ten o'clock at night, I'm gonna feel a little differently about that. Is that part of the discussion?
It hasn't been. We're just kind of deferring to what the county health regulations say. And it does, it's sixty five, I think, during the day, and it gets quiet, it drops off at night.
So there is a.
But sixty five is that cap, even though there's, there's sounds all day, every day that are louder than that, it's that sustained volume that we're trying to keep. At an acceptable level.
I think part of why there was that level also for daytime use is like, I agree that certainly it's more. Aggravating at night, but some of the. I guess, research or testimonials we read said this is really hard during the day too, and so that's why a limit was introduced for daytime. Some of them were saying like, it's really hard, I've got kids trying to nap, and there's this, you know, or I work from home, so. Think that using the. Using the county health regulation there for their limits during daytime and nighttime was. Was kind of what we looked at doing there.
Can we hear from Commissioner Ebbler?
I don't know if he heard you.
Commissioner Ebbler.
So I had a question on. Nineteen seventy six oh sixty C subsection E. On the affidavit. Unless I've misread this, I. It just seems. To have very little teeth, just unless I've missed something. The minute that the property. Changes hands with property owners, unless this is a covenant condition for on the sale of a property, the affidavit is meaningless because. It's no longer enforceable for the property owner, correct?
Technically, yes, and the affidavit itself doesn't add any restrictions beyond what the ordinance already does. It's just.
Right.
And going to the expense of building the court, we think it's an added layer to say. Just be aware of these regulations before you make the investment to build this court.
No, I mean, I understood, but like we're adding a regulation that basically just says, I'll comply with the law.
Yeah, yeah, that's what it is.
We have, just for the commission's consideration, with other affidavits, to have them be recorded.
Yeah.
The properties, so. You could contemplate that. We do that with the second kitchen agreements. Someone wants to put a basement kitchen, but they don't want to. Permit the full ADU accessory dwelling unit, they can record an agreement that says this is gonna be used in accordance with those regulations, so.
No, I mean, I get it, it's, I. I mean, it's been an interesting conversation and discussion, just because on one hand, it was like, okay. You know, are we looking for a solution? Based upon a couple, you know, a handful of complaints out of a town of, you know, fifty thousand people. And whereas, we already have the laws on the record, and I get it, I mean. Understanding what we're trying to do here, it's just, it's.
I think, yeah, I think, I hear, I understand too, but I think we need to, we recognize that. This is something that let's be proactive, let's get in front of it as much as we. As we can, and I don't, I think we should have it be applicable for. All sport courts. I don't think we should. Should single, single out.
I agree, that always bothered me, just in terms of anytime you start trying to single out use or whatever else, what happens? You know, when, when, you know, pickleball changes ten percent and they call it a new name, is it then pickleball?
Pickleball.
Got a few questions.
I have about a twenty minute rant, so if you wanna go.
I was only three.
I'll do you all, so.
Okay, we've specified five hundred square feet. The square footage of the pickleball court, just the court itself, it's eight hundred and eighty. Is there a way that we could, we could make that five hundred feet to say six or six fifty so that you. Don't have the opportunity to have a tennis court or a pickleball court and still be not having to have the sound ordinances and all that. But have room for maybe half court basketball or tetherball or other sports that would take up less room. I'm just curious, why we got five hundred?
The moratorium was imposed on sport courts over five hundred square feet, so the ordinance is written for sport courts over five hundred. That's where it came from.
Could we change that?
Yeah.
Well, I think that would be something we could look into, is to. Making that big enough that it's not so big that you could have a, have something that we don't want in it, but large enough. That it doesn't impact other sports that aren't quite as noisy.
So you could potentially say I'm gonna do, you know, a smaller basketball court, and it doesn't.
Well, you don't need, you don't need a full court, a half court to do it.
Sure.
I mean, you're just, you know, usually in somebody's backyard, they're playing half court, shooting baskets or something like that, why should we make that a problem?
So do you have a number in mind?
Somewhere between five hundred and eighty. I haven't really, I just thought about that while I was sitting there, so I don't. But I would say the upper limit, I don't wanna, I'd probably say eight hundred, essentially, so I can't have a sport court. But it could be. Six or six fifty or seven, something like that, so that makes. More sense. You just play with the math so that you could see what kinds of sports we could put in that and not have to go through all this other regulatory. Situation.
So you're, so what you're advocating for would exonerate these other sports from the sound studies and the. Potential need for sound mitigation?
Well, you're not gonna play, you're not gonna be playing tennis, you're not gonna be playing pickleball. If the sport that would fit that. Would fit in that small court, then yeah, then we don't have to do all of that, which increases in expense. You know, I have no idea what a sound engineer runs, but it's gonna be tough, and you know, if you're using trees for mitigation. At what stage of that tree are you doing it for? When they're really young, when you just planted, when you did the court?
Yeah.
For ten years later, when it's really huge.
With the modeling part of the thing.
Yeah.
Commissioner Shelton, do you know, is pickleball always played on that size of a court on the eight? Eighty, that standard?
It's played on tennis courts all the time.
Yeah, on bigger.
So on bigger courts, but. You couldn't really play pickleball on a court of that size because you'd have no. Area outside of the play surface. That would be really problematic.
With the dimensions, I've got it in my little study, I did the dimensions of a sport court, and that's where I got the eighty, is I did the court.
Yeah.
I mean, not to point out another issue, it's like you can, you can take a very small area. Put up a wall and hit a tennis ball back and forth on it. I mean, when I was in high school, that's, that's how I did, or that's how I practiced, and that's how I got it. A stroke down in terms of just lacing it over the net, and it's probably just as loud, if not louder, depending on kind of the acoustics of the yard. And how hard you hit.
Certainly not a good shot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
These are difficult, difficult issues.
All right, Mr. Shelton. Sorry, I apologize ahead of time because I'm gonna be a little preachy, and I hate when people are that way, so I'm gonna be that person I hate.
Four score, is it?
Four score and seven.
All right, there we go.
So I am gonna go to the constitution, the constitution, the bill of rights.
I was just joking, but.
But I'm.
Let's do it.
It's founded, the property rights law is founded on the protection of individual property rights. From the government. Not for the government. And according to the Utah Property Rights Ombudsman, who's the. At least an expert in the field in the state. He says, the basic right that people have in their property is to do whatever they want on their land. He says, if I own a piece of land, I can do whatever I want. A city, because of its nature as a police organization, has the right to enact zoning laws. That create exceptions. To that basic right. So I think it's important that we recognize that cities don't. Give rights. Property rights. Cities can restrict. By exception. Property rights. Those laws that create those restrictions are permitted only to the extent that they ensure the health. Safety and welfare of citizens. So they're limited, the way you can create exceptions is limited by that. Properly formed zoning restriction that takes those rights from a resident. Must define standards that will apply to future land use applications. Now, the standard proposed here, as I see it. Says that any activity adjacent to a residential property that produces a decibel rating of more than sixty five. Decibels at the property line. Is detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare. Of adjacent residents or property users. That's the standard we're talking about setting. Anything you do. That exceeds sixty five decibels at the property line. Must be detrimental, or we aren't. Authorized to regulate it. To health, safety, and welfare. I have a really hard time accepting that because. We permit a host of things. That exceed that standard. All day, every day. If we said we would deny a permit to someone who didn't meet that standard. We would have to deny a permit to anyone who wants to build a home. Because you can't operate those power tools in that decimal range. We would say, you're gonna have to sign an affidavit that says you're not gonna use a table saw, a chop saw, a. A. Air nail or anything like that.
With a hill saw.
Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, as long as you're far enough away, you do it inside. So I just cannot accept. That standard. I think it's interesting to note. That. The public. Owns several sport courts. The tennis courts at Crescent Park. Based on this standard are detrimental to health, safety, and welfare. The courts at Butler Park. Detrimental to health, safety, and welfare. The courts at. Bywater Park. Detrimental to health, safety, and welfare. None of those courts. Meet these standards. Mill Hall Park. Doesn't meet the standard. Golden Hills Park. Doesn't meet the standard. So that's just if you talk about sport courts. But if that standard should apply to all future land use. Think about all of the prohibited. Uses. That fall into that category. You have a high school across the street that's close enough. Well, it doesn't really matter. It's adjacent to residential properties, and when they play football there. It does not meet that standard, and so we're saying by setting this standard. That playing football over there is detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare. Of our community. I just can't accept that. We would say so many things. Mowing your lawn, we're gonna now require you. To buy an electric lawnmower because a traditional lawnmower is detrimental to health, safety, and welfare. You could just go on and on with the things that we have decided. Are acceptable that don't meet this standard. And so I can't, I can't. Adopt that standard. Maybe not twenty minutes, but I got a good fifteen.
That's good. Thank you for, thank you for sharing. Other thoughts and observations?
Well, I'm gonna, thank you for that, but I'm gonna say that I think that equating everyday living and building a home. To the playing of something that is. Takes away from a person being able to enjoy. Where they live, that I don't think that that falls upon the property rights of someone to do something that's detrimental. Building a home is a temporary thing. It's not a permanent, not a permanent court, it's not a permanent situation. Someone's building a home, it lasts six months, a year, maybe it lasts eighteen months, but it's not permanent.
Question is, is it detrimental? Is the noise detrimental?
Well, I mean, it could be.
Yeah.
But, but it's also not permanent. And it's also, it's also, it's something that's necessary to maybe improve the community. But having something take place, be it. Whatever it is. It's not, I think we need to think about the balance between people having the right. To enjoy their property, whether they have a sport court or they don't have a sport court. And so how do we balance that? And put in place. Things that make that balance that. Because something has to happen. Something has to happen to address any kind of noise that is persistent and does not. It takes away from. Being able to enjoy your property as a, as a, as a owner of property. So it's not just being able to build, you can't build whatever you want. On your property. You can't. That's why there are, that's why there's zoning rules, that's why there's other regulations, so the. Saying, I think, what the Ombuds person said about you can build wherever you want is not true. The Ombudsman person could not just build whatever they want on their property. You can't. We have rules, so, and the rules are there to balance again, hopefully to balance. And not, and it's gonna look like it's not a balance if you are wanting to build. A sport court. And whatever you're wanting to utilize that sport court for as a higher noise level than what is acceptable by Salt Lake County, which is what. Compton Heights uses. It's gonna look unfair. For sure. And I understand that, but I think we've just got to figure out how to balance it. And maybe it is increasing that it's not five hundred fifty square feet, that we look at doing something. Larger, so it's not a regulation for everyone. But. If we don't, I think we do a disservice by not really thinking about how we can balance it.
It's the balancing act.
Yeah, and not just saying, oh, we're not gonna do anything because. It becomes. I don't know, uncomfortable or something, or something, but it's, we, I just feel like there's something that we need to understand. I'm fine with the ordinance as it is, as we've written it. If people can show that what they're going to do is not gonna be above the noise levels that are. Already part of Compton Heights ordinances, then fine, they. Build it.
Just a second, yeah. Hey, I want to give everybody a chance to be heard here. This is not gonna, we're not playing tennis here, guys, so.
I'm not playing.
So.
No, I was about to, that was what.
This is not you, this is coming back here, so this is, I. You were completely appropriate in what you said, Commissioner Anderson, so. I just want to make sure that we hear all the voices here, so. Commissioner Smith?
Sure, the issue for me is what really is the proper role of government? In a situation like this, and I appreciate Commissioner Shelton's. Focus on. The rights of property owners. And how that can run into the rights of other property owners. I think it's a delicate question, and I'm glad we're having a good discussion about this. I don't have the answer to this. In my own personal situation, I wouldn't mind at all if my neighbors had. Pickleball courts, but I can't speak for everybody, but really, the fundamental question for me is what is the proper role of government, and I think. Historically, governments tend to encroach more and more on. Individual rights, and I have. That causes me anxiety, and certainly there are times where that's appropriate. But I think we need to be very thoughtful before we go down the course of encroaching on individual rights. I don't know what the answer to this is.
Anything to add to your original thoughts?
Yeah, it's a balancing act. When you go to a football game. It's noisy. But it's gonna last two hours. And they know that, and it's gonna happen. You know, the other week, we're only going football, so you put up with it. If you go to an NBA game. Reading what I've read, it surpasses a hundred and nine decibels, and we all go there and pay money to do it. There are studies that will show you that you get ear damage to your hearing for a long. Decibels at ninety or above. We've all been to a concert at one time or another. I used to go to drag races. And couldn't hear for three days very well, you know. But it was fun, but it is a balancing act, and that's the deal. I think one of the, one of the things that has, as I've read. What generates complaints with pickleball specifically. Is it's quick, it's repetitive, and it's played. Uh, what generates complaints with pickleball specifically is it's, it's quick, it's repetitive and, and it's played. Wait, all day. And that's what bothers the neighbors. If it's once in a while, it wasn't so noisy, it wasn't, wasn't so frequent, they'd probably say, you know. Little bit during the day or a couple times a week, nah, no problem, but. All the time, then, then your rights and you're doing on your property is now impacting mine. And that's kind of what we're talking about there is, is what happens at the fence. I would hopefully wouldn't put it on top of the fence because I would use that for mitigation, so anyway.
I would say the, the comment about, you know, if it would be different if it was kind of a one-off thing here and there.
Yeah.
We definitely didn't want to get into the business of regulating that, right? And saying like, you can only use it twice a week and we're going to be out there checking on you.
Yeah, if you use it three.
We, we didn't even really want to get into the business of saying we're going to regulate whatever you stop. Playing and doing what you enjoy. And so it's, it's tricky um, for us as planners to say, okay, our job is to look at health, safety and welfare and. And how are we regulating in line with that and, and really hard to know where the line is because I think there is different perception from each person about what is health, safety and welfare. What does that look like? So. That's important that it's put through a commission so that there can be um, broad dialogue and it's not something staff is just fighting.
Commissioner Evler, more thoughts that you want to add?
Yeah, as we're progressing and, and, and as I was listening to both sides of the argument, I, I just wanted to say that. In all my years of government service, be it on this body or formerly um, uh, back east. Um, when, when I was an elected official, this is by far one of the most interesting issues I've, I've ever sat. On and, and, and I sat in front of an eminent domain issue. Kind of a, kind of a secondary or tertiary issue to this of, of. What is the role of government when it comes to property rights? And, and it's a really, really interesting discussion because I can see both sides of this argument.
Thank you. Um, I, I'll just add a comment or two and uh, how are we doing on time here?
About five minutes to. We can do the form-based code update like really, really briefly, so I'm not really worried about that.
You know, I, uh, mostly you know, I'm a physical therapist by profession. I'm a huge advocate for people moving. And creating more spaces on people's private property and on public spaces for people to move. But by any way that they choose to move. I also share that feeling of uh, trying to preserve property rights as much as we possibly can. And the bounds of the city that we had some challenges to that. I appreciate, I always appreciate context and the context of the constitution. And ombudsman, so thank you for the, the research. I really appreciate the, the facts and figures related to other activities and the relative. You know, the, the range in terms of the hurts and, you know, the, the why behind why pickleball is a little bit different and. Um, I really appreciate Commissioner Anderson pointing out that there's a, that, a. A contrasting view here and I, I, I share many of her sentiments that when what you start doing on your property. Starts affecting the people on adjacent properties, we have to be really, really careful. As we're trying to preserve property rights here. Um, I'm very, I, I'm, I'm excited about the fact that what we do. Recognizes that we are going to pass something on to the city council, so as much input as we get tonight. This will not be a decided issue regardless of where we land, what the final. What the final verbiage is and what we pass or don't pass. Uh, the city council will get the final bite at the apple, so just to reassure you. And this, this is good and I hope that the members of the public that are listening to this, um, there is, there is no sentiment with this group. To, to forbid any activity. I, I think we all love that this is such an active community. And are anxious to keep it an active community and look for ways to make it an even more active community, so. We'll, we'll continue the discussion uh, in the, in the business meeting, so thank you all for your comments.
Procedurally, um, we don't necessarily need the, the vote tonight, probably in one of the January meetings we will to get it to council and, and. Give them enough time to, to do something by March, but if you want to continue the discussion, we could.
I, let me just take it, let me just ask the commissioner then. You, I mean, I think that people's views, uh, you feel like more information or more discussion with our group. Is going to appreciably change where you feel like you're likely to land on this?
I don't think so.
It would depend. You know, I, I would, I might be happier if there are a little bit wider parameters in it, uh, you know. I, I'm just thinking if I were doing that and I had, had to find an acoustical engineer or whoever would be able to do those studies and. Pay for all that, but I don't know what the trees are going to be like and how high the fence can be. I've read one study. That you can, with padding on a fence, you can, you can dampen it thirty-two decibels. But the fence was fifteen feet high.
Sure.
And so you can make it a really ugly looking place and make it much quieter.
So, uh, Commissioner Evler, how about you?
I'm, I'm, I'm honestly fifty-fifty on this issue and, and it's really going to depend on, on um, future discussion amongst us. Um, I, I, I find both sides of the argument very persuasive.
Okay, then my, my tendency is that we, we, we wait. I, I will offer this caveat that I, I will be out of the country for our next meeting, which means that. Uh, our, our vice commissioner uh, will be, you know, Commissioner Anderson will be. Leading the deliberation on this. I promise I'm not running away from it. I will happily, I will happily be the one to conduct the discussion in February, but uh, I, I'm. I, I'm grateful for that. I, based on the, the feedback and the fact that we're missing two of our commissioners, I, I think I'm going to just ask that we uh. Wait on this issue until, until January and I think I've expressed my feelings that um, I. I'm, I'm, I will just state I'm generally comfortable with the issue, the, the ordinance as it sits right now. Um, I, I am anxious to consider that possibility of uh, adjusting the size. And, and I'm, I'm very sensitive to um, making sure that the process. Is as accessible as possible and errors on the side of the rights of the property owner. In terms of whatever that sound study is, so if there are, if there are additional information that you find in your individual research that we can suggest. To make the, the ordinance. As reasonable as possible and not cost prohibitive, that would be my, my one statement as we move forward.
Yeah, it, just, just logistically tonight, it's probably, since we're an even number of people, it's probably not a great vote to take.
Yeah, well, and again, I would, I really, because of the nature and the information, I think that the, the. City council will be looking and I think they will look at the vote and I would, I, I. Just a matter of course strive for unanimity with this group where possible, but I also realize that there are certain circumstances where. We, we need to vote our conscience and our minds and I, I absolutely respect that and would never uh, encourage you to vote against that, so. Thank you for that, that point, Commissioner Evler. I had not done the math until you pointed that out.
I, I just, I, I did.
Three-three vote, so.
Yeah, I did a quick tabulation, just realized that I, I'd probably. Right, Mike, it just says a point of clarification, if we were three-three, vote fails anyways, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, with that, um.
We'll, we'll do form-based code in the business meeting.
Yeah, in the interest of time, I can just sit on it after you're done in there.
That's great. Okay, uh, one more motion to consider.
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, second.
My motion is second, all in favor of adjourn?
Hi.